The record will reflect that all members of council are present except for council member Rosansky.
Mr. City Manager, I understand you have a introduction to make?
I do, Mr. Mayor and council members, I'd like to introduce to you and welcome to the podium for a few brief comments, our interim fire chief, his name is Steve Parker, so please welcome Steve.
Chief Parker, welcome.
Thank you very much, good afternoon. Well, I want to say, real excited to be here and serve as your interim fire chief, it's very exciting, I've been a resident of Orange County myself since 1967 when I transferred down to attend UCI, and I've lived in the city itself probably about, equivalent to about 10 years, as a younger person, my first year of marriage, so when this opportunity came up, I was real excited and felt I certainly knew the city a little bit, and certainly know the Orange County Fire Service very well. I've got over 33 years now in the fire service, and I started in Buena Park quite a while ago, and then worked in Huntington Beach Fire for over 24 years, and when I became fire chief up in Vernon, which is right next to Los Angeles. Since my retirement, I've been, had the great opportunity to come back, and this will be my third interim assignment, and I was in Costa Mesa for a year, and then in Hermosa Beach for six months in 2008, and now this opportunity, so again, it's really an honor to be able to serve the city of Newport Beach in the council, so I'm excited, and this is day six and a half here, so I'm still pretty buried and learning stuff, but it's starting to sift down to where some of it's sticking, and I can understand it, so anyway, thank you very much, and for allowing me to be your fire chief.
Thank you, chief, and welcome aboard.
Sure, thank you.
And we hope you have no fires to put out.
Let's keep it all nice and calm, right?
Is there something about Huntington Beach and people named Steve? I mean, is that...
The next item is clarification for items on the consent calendar, we'll start with Mr. Selich.
I have none.
Mr. Hen.
Yes, I have just one. When will the Balboa Village parking study recommendations come back to council? Do we have some feeling, I know you've been busy with the Balboa Market and some other things, I'm just curious if you have a view of when we might be seeing that come back?
I have a beginning draft of a report on the parking lot, and the funding for that headed for April 13th. Another report on potential of renewing a lease or renewing to a lease with someone who's currently parking on it headed for April 13th, and then I'm hoping that by the second meeting in April, or very latest, the first meeting in May, the parking management district.
Councilmember Daigle.
Question for the city manager on number 10, that's the public dock improvements, and I understand as part of the specs that it was wood, and so other materials were deemed non-responsive. Do you have any suggestions if, in future bids, what the city might want to do if we were to consider other materials, what, how we'd go about doing that?
Thank you, councilmember Daigle, I think it's something I'd like the, maybe too, be brought back to council, I might defer to the Public Works Director on whether or not we should change our construction specs to focus more on other materials rather than wood, so if the council's interested in us taking a look at that so that a bid like this might be acceptable, we're happy to do that.
Okay. And then how best to receive that direction, I guess would be my question?
We, Steve, are these specs that would be, they're not, certainly not in Title 17, unless are they more in some of your own codes?
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not really sure of the mechanism of that, I see Chris coming up, and maybe he can shed some light on it. And Dave.
Title 17 does allow for alternate materials, pending building, building and department approval calculations, of course, but certainly for future RFPs, for dock projects, we should perhaps write in, or at least entertain the idea of writing in alternate materials. We had focused on wood, on this particular one, because our existing docks were woods, we want to mate wood with wood.
But in the future, we could possibly broaden that to more materials?
Sure, sure, especially if we were rebuilding a complete new public dock.
Right.
We could start from scratch, certainly.
Could we start with one project as a trial, to see how it works out, perhaps, rather than just automatically approve it for all of them?
I think that's a good idea, and if we were to completely rebuild, let's say, one public pier in the future, perhaps we could do that entire public pier in this, in a different alternate material?
Chris, why don't, unless there's a council objection, why don't we ask the Harbor Commission with you to take a look at that and make a recommendation as to what might be the appropriate first step there?
Okay, sure.
Okay.
Thank you. Councilmember Gardner?
Number five, I appreciate brevity, but this one, I mean, there's no rationale behind what you're asking us to do, which is that we're selecting that kennel managers should be, get a background check, and I, I want my pet to be well taken care of, but I just, if we're going to do it on the consent calendar, there should be at least a paragraph of why I think we're doing this.
Yes, ma'am, the municipal code actually requires the chief of police to conduct background investigations into any person that's requesting a kennel license. This merely allows us, in order to comply with the municipal code, to utilize the Department of Justice so that we can live scan their fingerprints in order to conduct that background investigation.
Great, so a sentence there would have clarified it for me, and I would have been very happy.
Yes, ma'am.
Also on parking, since Mike was mentioning it, and I understand that the Balboa parking study somehow jumped ahead of the Corona del Mar one, is that true? Well, good work, Mike. Just to emphasize, so I got a call from someone, a businessperson in Corona del Mar, and they were complaining because a business up the street has all his employees parking on Coast Highway and constantly moving their cars, so it's interfering with business, and yet, if I go and say harass that guy, then he's going to have all his employees parking back in the residential district, so it would be nice to get our parking study going at some point so we can find a resolution.
Thank you, councilmember Webb. Councilmember Rosansky, do you have any questions or comments on the consent calendar? No, thank you. Okay. The next item is the report of the Special Events Advisory Committee and recommendations on criteria, application form, and application review process for considering requests for city funding for special events.
Mr. Mayor, I apologize, I had a few brief comments I wanted to make on the consent calendar, rather than pulling them tonight.
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
On item three, a clarification, item three involves the shortening the sea lion notification that a person might get if they're having a sea lion problem, there's an alternative that's been included and recommended, is a 10-day notice instead of a seven-day notice, thinking that if someone was counting mail and weekends, it might be more appropriate to do seven, sorry, 10 days instead of seven, so I wanted to make sure you were aware that was in the final staff report and recommendations.
All right, and on that, I just, I had a note that during our Coastal Bay Water Quality Committee meeting, one of our members wanted to know if the city was doing everything it could, because he feels that it is putting, we're putting a huge burden on the individual boats, and that they look like hell, to quote him, with all the orange stuff and things they have, so are we comfortable that the city is doing as much as it can to work, to move those sea lions out of the boats and everything?
I'm comfortable that we're, go ahead, Chris. I'm comfortable that we're doing everything that we know we can do, including hiring a guy with a pump and a hose to go and hose them down in the dark of night, in accordance with the Marine Mammal Protection Act, but Chris, do you have any other comments there?
Well, we're, we're also planning to communicate with all of our dock permatese and mooring permatese about this new rule, if it does pass tonight, as well as passing out, handing out, if you recall, a few years ago, we had these stickers that we give the commercial folks, so the charter folks, and they don't feed the sea lions and other wildlife, so.
Good, I'll take that back to the committee.
Another one, Mr. Mayor, on item...
Mr. Mayor, before we get to that, just if anyone's interested, there's a interesting video on YouTube where a sea lion took over a Orange County Harbor Patrol boat, and with his flippers, his flipping levers back and forth, and the lights are going on, and quite humorous.
Oh, gosh, Mr. Kiff.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On item number eight, then, eight has to do with the ad hoc committee regarding the connexent development agreement, and I wanted to make sure that you are aware that the staff report that went out on Friday with the recommendation to confirm Mr. Selich and Mr. Rosansky on that committee. And then, I wanted to talk about, you're going to, I think you are going to hear a presentation later tonight on item 16, so that may be pulled, so I won't, I won't speak to that. Item 18 is not a consent item, so Leoni may hit me on this, but I do have some people in the audience that are, work on this, this is called a Tefra hearing, it involves Our Lady Queen of Angels, and I just wanted to point out to the council that this is an example where the city is doing something like we do for Hoag, where we've declared that there's a public benefit in issuing a tax-exempt financing. This is the first time we've done one for Our Lady Queen of Angels and a school, we're trying to say, well, does this open, trying to discuss whether this opens interesting doors, and could anyone do that? I had this discussion with the mayor, given the mayor's expertise, and with the city attorney, perfectly acceptable to do this tonight, but I wanted to at least raise that issue with you, and as the mayor said, you, as a council, always have discretion as to whether or not you want to do this, so whether it sets a precedent or not, you could decide that one entity may not have the ability to issue these under the city's power, and one entity may.
We are going to be discussing that, but one of the things I'd like the city attorney's office to opine on, then, is if it, we did decide, and all of a sudden we're using our discretion, are we ending up discriminating against certain groups for whatever reason? So that would be something I'd be interested in.
With that, Mr. Mayor, I'm done.
Okay, thank you, Mr. City Manager, we're now ready for the, well, I suppose I should ask, are there any public comments on, on the consent calendar, before we have public comments on them in the actual council meeting? I'd say none, so now we'll go to the Special Events Committee report, please, Mr. Rockefeller.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, and ladies and gentlemen of city council, and executive leadership of the city. I'm Kerwin Rockefeller, I live in Newport Coast, and I'm here today representing the Newport Beach Special Events Advisory Committee, and I'd like to first of all, give a thanks to our, and acknowledge my fellow committee members, Laura Davis, who was our chair, is not able to be here today, Judith Brower Fancher, Jeff Cole, Janice Dinwiddie, Kim Severini, and Marshall Topping, and I'd also like to give a real strong word of appreciation to our staff liaison, Lee DeSantis. We are here today to give you an update on our progress, as you know, the Special Events Committee was formed last summer, we have been meeting on a regular basis since August of 2009. We've fulfilled two of our duties so far, and we're here to share them with you today. One of our duties was to recommend the city council criteria to be used in evaluating future requests for city support over and beyond the $20,000 mark, and to create a master calendar for the city on special events. First of all, you should have received at the mayor's dinner, a copy of our special events calendar, a special thanks also to city staff for putting this document together, and if you haven't already seen, the document is also in the back of the Newport Navigator in a convenient tear-out form. We hope to be updating this particular event calendar on a quarterly basis. You should have received in your council packets, a staff report outlining much of this presentation today, I'd like to direct your attention to the evaluation funding criteria that we have had discussions about over the past several months, and point out a couple of interesting points, and again, please know that we're, we're here today to get your feedback, to get your assessment, to get any advice or comments that you might have as we continue on our process. But a couple of things to point out, we feel strongly that the event should enhance the city of Newport Beach, contribute towards creating a unique brand identity for the, for the city, should create a sense of pride, civic pride and ownership, should increase the number of people who would normally come into the city, and thereby provide a direct benefit to local businesses, that the city's support will be used for implementation of an event and not for planning, we see that the city's support, we recommend that the city's support should represent no more than 30% of a total budget, and we certainly would like to know other entities in the city that are also being approached for sponsorship opportunities. The event need not always be free, but should be accessible to the community and the public. We seek for the applicants to demonstrate an ability to produce and market a well-planned and safe event, and the applicant must demonstrate strong financial management and effective management controls, including cost effectiveness. In your package, you should have a copy of a application form that we have divided up into three separate areas, the first part of the application form really is event summary and application information, and this provides us with direct contact information and people that we can talk to if we need additional information. Section two will include a qualitative point, asking for an event summary of no longer than two pages, and section three is a much more quantitative evaluation component here, looking at various points such as business plan, marketing plan, budget plans, waste minimization, recycling plans, and permit plans as well. Now, we look to evaluate the applications using a point system, where we hope to have been, again, be able to quantify, and then send recommendations to the city council. The first, if I can sort of borrow an education metaphor, the first section of the application we see as a pass fail, if you don't fill out the information, we don't have much confidence in you, and we'll ask you to either resubmit it, or we will just turn it down. Section number two, again, which is the benefits section, is the qualitative section, and we're currently strategizing that that would count for 50% of the final grade. Again, using an academic metaphor, because once a professor, always a professor, we could see this, again, counting for half of the total evaluation. Section three, we're seeing right now, again, being divided up with a variety of different weights and points, for example, and we still would like to play with this a little bit, a marketing plan or a budget could get as much as 20 points out of the whole 50. Which would then bring us to the application process, we see the applicants must apply six months in advance of their event, this also coincides with the necessary time to pull special permits with the city, and events currently identified as meeting the future fund, the funding threshold of $20,000 are subject to review by the Special Events Advisory Committee, assuming that they request funding at a future date. So if we look at our three sections, we're still sort of reviewing this amongst ourselves, but to continue that academic metaphor, something we'd like to think about and refine, for example, if an event gets a 95, gets an A+, comes directly to city council with no hesitation. As another example, if it has a 90, which is an A-, we might send it to city council with some questions or concerns. Continuing along that metaphor, if it has an 80, which is a B-, we would certainly like to request more information from the applicant, certainly provide opportunities for a public interview, or an interview with the particular members of that organization, and it might then come to city council with some reservation. Again, please understand that that's something we would like to work with a little bit as we review our first applications here, but that metaphor, we have found to be very useful.
Kerwin?
I'm sorry.
Sorry, on, what's the reasoning behind the six months prior? What if somebody comes in five months prior, they don't know that the...
A couple of, a couple of things, and again, knowing that we feel we need a good amount of time to review an application, to send you the application as well with our recommendations, we also know that pooling city permits requires a good amount of time, and I'll actually also open it up or share that particular comment with my colleagues right here, Kim and Lee, we've discussed that, if you'd like to add some more to that, please.
It's our understanding that the council wanted to try and get all of these applications on the fiscal year budget cycle, and so that's why we were asking them, all of, all of them to come in by what would be the first of December, that means potentially there'll be five large applications to review at any one time, and try and have information to you by May, probably not later than June, and so that's how we worked backwards to get that date. Now, within the staff report, you'll note that this first year, we're thinking there'll be at least three of them that will be applying, and the committee has committed to making every effort to have that information in time for you to consider this budget cycle at your second meeting in June, but under other circumstances, they felt they needed additional time to go through it, particularly when five applications came in at once.
Let me also say that one reason that we're here today is to get your advice and your input on the process.
But then, the city permit requirement also, I guess, has, has a six-month lead time associated with it, so is it contemplated that these timeframes could run parallel, or are we potentially in a situation where somebody would be a year out because they've got to have a six-month approval through your committee and then pull a permit? What's the intent there?
The assumption was that they may run concurrently, or they may not, because we want the funding to be on the budget cycle, that would encourage everyone to submit in December, since the permit isn't required till six months before the event, you might submit in December for funding in June that you won't be using until the following fiscal year, while you have an event that's occurring in August, and so back in February, you applied for a permit for that previous event, and then you don't need to apply till the following February, so they're not necessarily tracking exactly together, and the questions that this application asks about the permit are simply, have you applied for one, or when are you applying for one, so that we make sure they're aware of the need to do so.
All right, well, I guess just in terms of feedback to the committee, then, I would recommend we really be flexible about this, to not have a stacking of timeframes, you know, that could be a very good idea, that would come up, that we'd want to have execution in a total of six months.
Yeah, this is something that we've discussed at great length, and I think where we were, we wanted to start someplace, and this was the place to start, recognizing that we do want to be able to have flexibility and options there, but we felt we had to start someplace, and particularly as we go through the process, we will learn more and we'll make some revisions.
Councilmember Gardner?
It's almost impossible to pull any event that would cost this kind of money in six months, so I mean, I don't know, that's unreasonable, I do though, to me, it should be a moving target, I mean, I don't know that it's fair to say everybody, okay, we want to get it, them all in by December, because that could be very problematic, so, but I think a six-month process is a good one with some flexibility, understood that if something comes up, it seems just too fantastic, and for some reason, they're able to do it, because they're duplicating it in something else, that we could narrow that window if possible.
But this is, I mean, I guess that, as you said, Kerwin, the idea is to get it in the budget cycle, is that, so what if someone comes in on September 1st and says, I'm having an event in May? Are we not going to consider that event now?
No, yet I think these are just basic guidelines to start us off, but we're open to that flexibility there as well, we also know that, yes, as councilmember Gardner said, if you're looking at a substantial contribution, it takes time to plan that event, so we see a range, it's a process.
Okay, well, I certainly, I mean, not that I'm looking to dole out money right and left, but, you know, in that case, someone might have to apply like, you know, a lot more than six months in advance for a project, for an event, that doesn't make sense to me, I think we need to fine-tune that a little bit.
We're aware of that, I think what we didn't want is someone coming to us on May 1st and saying, we want an answer by June 1st, and we talked about, should it be three months? Should it be four months? Should it be two months? And I remember the conversation, we did talk about this a lot, we tried to start someplace, but again, we're here for your feedback today.
And just so I'm clear, all requests, all special, or requests for assistance through your committee, or this committee, or the group, whatever, is, you're going to give a point score, and so the ones that score high, they're just going to move right on, but they're ultimately all going to move on to the city council, correct?
Oh, yeah.
With a recommendation?
Unless they don't do that first section, because they don't have a contact person, that would cause us to have some concern.
I can understand that, I'll let that one go.
So again, I mean, what we have talked about, we haven't set this yet, is just for strategy ideas, if it gets a 70, that's a pass, if it gets a 50, again, if we have those two scores there, we might want to really reconsider it. We can ask for more information, we can then pass it along to you with just our comments.
It seems to me that if someone... It seems to me that if someone had a 40, I don't know why it would come to council, there might be an appeal process or something if the committee didn't pick it up, but I don't want, know that we'd want to see everything like that.
Well, my understanding with this committee was that it was advisory in nature, and that all requests ultimately are going to come to the council, that there's not going to be, yes, you can, no, you can't. It's just, you know, if you're a 40, obviously I can imagine your recommendation is not going to be very good, and we probably wouldn't accept it. But I didn't, my understanding of this committee is they are not going to say yea or nay to any event.
I stand corrected.
Mr. Selich.
Thank you, Mayor. Kirwan, on your evaluation criteria for city support, number seven, on the value of in-kind services, how or who does that get documented or approved? I've seen some of these things where I think the value is somewhat questionable that they're putting down.
I'm sorry, your question again?
Who or how are you going to document or confirm the value of the in-kind services?
You know, we've talked about that as well, and I think that's part of our discovery process, particularly when we interview an organization. We certainly will get the budget from them, and then we'll review that. And we're, have been talking amongst ourselves, so how exactly can we evaluate that?
So it's your intent that your committee then would do the investigation and make a recommendation to the council on that?
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
And also, just the 30 percent, I wondered how that came. We don't want it to be more than 30 percent of the total event budget. Are we 30 percent of a number of events? I don't really know. But it must be based on some sort of experience.
We did quite a bit of benchmarking with other events in other cities, and this was, they were using anything from 25 up to 50 percent of the total event cost, and we just chose 30 percent as a basic average number. But when we really looked at it and broke it down, you really don't want to get too much above 30 percent, because basically it's the city's function.
I wasn't concerned that it was too low.
So, yeah, we used it as a benchmark, but we looked at quite a few cities. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm Kim Severini with Visit Newport Beach.
Mayor Pro Tim Hinn.
Yes, just a comment. I noted this idea about having a post-event valuation. I think that's an excellent idea, and I would look forward to seeing those on a regular basis. So it looks like the committee's going to have regular activity to be concerned with. So that's just, that's just a great thing, and I really encourage that to happen. With regard to the issue that councilmember Rosansky raised about advisory, I think he's right, that we did initially set this up as an advisory committee. And my suggestion would be if you prosecute an application that comes out with a 40 percent score, you offer the applicant the opportunity to press on to council or go away. And if they choose to press on to council, they know they're doing it swimming against the stream. And so I'm, I'm okay with that, you know, even though we might see some things-
And if I could just add, it's something that we struggled with a great deal, is the quantification and the qualification. And how do you evaluate the qualitative sense of civic pride? How do you, you know, and so we were struggling with that, and we wanted to make it as fair and as equitable as we possibly could, but having some strong quantification there with the point system, but also having subjective input as well.
Well, as to the qualitative issues, I did have a comment. Your, your second evaluation criteria has to do with creating a unique identity or a brand for the city of Newport Beach, contribute toward that. I'm not sure I can recollect what our brand statement is-
Thank you.
-for the city of Newport Beach. And so, you know, when this comes back, I'd, I'd like to be refreshed on that or first advised of what we consider to be our brand identity.
And we've had many conversations about that, too.
Yeah.
It's a sticky, it's a stick, a sticky wicket. It's sort of a slippery throat. How do you quantify that? How do we define that?
But, but-
We had a sense of what that might mean, and again-
That might almost be defined by a negative.
Kim, Kim has one. They, they spent a lot of money developing this.
Well, most people do, and so I'm just asking that, let's, let's bring that forward here as we consider this the next time around, so.
But let me, Kirwan, have we test-driven these criteria against our existing events? For example, are we confident that something like the Newport to Ensenada race or the film festival have an adequate charitable component where they would score appropriately on the criteria that are recommended or, or not?
We've done some beta testing amongst ourselves and comparing events that many of us are personally familiar with, and they've, it's, it's come out well. Lee, would you like to add something to that? I saw you.
We've not done a great deal of it, I mean, sort of anecdotally, in part because the committee felt they wanted to avoid building something to let specific people through. That 30 percent threshold was another one of those areas that we have not looked at. I have no idea what our past contributions to these five organizations have represented percentage-wise. They were asked to sort of look at, at what they thought it ought to be, so no, we didn't shape it to make sure all five or none of the five would get through.
That's good.
Thank you.
I had a question about the special events calendar, and it's being produced quarterly. Does the city pay for that?
No, it, it, it's so far been a one-time annual shot. If the council likes it well enough, it could be done on an annual basis, but since it's a printed piece, there's no way to update it without sending out a new one. This year, a portion of it was paid for out of the council's budget, and a portion of it was paid for out of the economic development budget. And the only way it could be quarterly updated would be if it were on a website, and it does not meet our web criteria, so it is not on a website, so there's no opportunity to update except perhaps annually.
Okay, so I, did I misunderstand that? I thought that you had-
I misspoke.
Oh, okay.
Are there any other comments or-
Staff always leads the way, remember?
Any other comments or direct advice to the committee?
I would just say, this is terrific. I think it's something the city needs, and I think the work is great. Yeah, there's a little tinkering to be done, but well done. I, I look forward to your evaluations.
My, my only comment would be that I would like to ensure that we do have some flexibility. And here, I think the six-month lead time is a good goal and everything, but there's always an exception and a worthwhile event out there, and that we don't make this so stringent that somebody can't come up with a mid-year or mid-budget cycle project, event, and, you know, we not consider it.
Yes, point, point well taken, and in fact, we're meeting next week to review this. And if you have any comments you'd like to forward to us, we're here to hear you. And again, we're looking forward to start receiving and reviewing applications by May 10th.
Thank you, Kirwan. Good job. Are there any public comments related to this report? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to the next item, the report of the Oceanfront Safety Steering Committee.
Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, this is the work of, this, an update to the council on the work of the Oceanfront Safety Steering Committee. Tara Finnegan is going to present this for us.
Mayor and council, it's been a year since the Oceanfront Safety Steering Committee has come to you with some of their recommendations. And this afternoon, we're going to give you an update on their activities for the past year, and also bring forth their final recommendations for council's consideration and direction. I know the council recalls, but in case anyone in the audience does not, the committee came about as a result of a December 2008 community meeting that was held here in the chambers. We had heard from many residents in the area, the peninsula area, that they were unhappy with the way things were going along the oceanfront. A number of issues were brought forth that evening, but three in particular were the excessive speeds along the oceanfront, a perceived proliferation of motorized conveyances, and a perceived lack of enforcement by city staff in terms of the existing ordinance. Based upon that meeting, a steering committee was formed with members from the community. We had oceanfront residents, peninsula residents, a local business owner, and a representative of the community association to help staff kind of ferret through some of these issues and come up with some reasonable solutions. We have many competing interests, as you know, for a very confined space, and we're always looking for ways to balance those interests. In April 2009, we brought you some preliminary recommendations. In the past year, we've had a chance to implement some of those, and the committee has gone back and done some further research and study into a few areas, in particular, the use of segways and the use of surries on the oceanfront. Now, Captain Dale Johnson from the Police Department is going to talk about what happened in this past year in terms of enforcement and outreach, and then Brad Summers will talk about some of the engineering issues.
Thank you, Tara. As, as Tara discussed earlier, one of the focuses of the committee, obviously, was the enforcement issues as they occur on the boardwalk and the oceanfront sidewalk issue. We came up with a, a plan that we thought would address this in a manner that allowed us to best use our resources and actually target the type of enforcement that we were hoping to do. So what we created were, we called them oceanfront safety events. They started in May of 2009, and they essentially allowed us to take a group of officers supplemented by volunteers, supplemented by explorers, cadets, and go down to the oceanfront sidewalk and contact people that were there, businesses, residents, users of the sidewalk. Essentially, we began that outreach and that enforcement posture by providing education. What were the current ordinances and regulations as they result, as they regulate the boardwalk, what our enforcement posture was going to be as we moved forward into the summer and forward into the years as they gone by. We've since had a total of six of those type of events, with each one, the enforcement side of it becoming greater and greater. This allowed not only the opportunity to reach out to the public and provide enforcement, but also allowed us to educate our officers on what the, the concerns of the residents and the business people down, were down there, and kind of raise their awareness of the issues also. During, from May of 2009 until today, we've issued a total of 191 citations for boardwalk violations. I'm also aware of several other physical arrests, which has occurred just as a result of some of those outreach programs. As we sit here today, as I indicated, we have five more boardwalk events scheduled during the summertime and throughout the rest of this calendar year, correct, the rest of this calendar year. And also, our bike patrol has certainly updated their, their patrol of the boardwalk and the oceanfront sidewalk, and most of the feedback that we've gotten from the residents down there is that we're able to see some, some empirical improvement in the number of people, their behavior on the boardwalk, and certainly on the number of unauthorized vehicles such as skateboards or powered scooters, those sort of things. We also were able to obtain two dolly-mounted radar boards. Essentially, they're very small, very portable devices that we have continued to deploy on the sidewalk in various places since we obtained them in June. This allows people to understand how fast they're going, an eight mile an hour speed limit. One of our concerns was, how do you realize what eight miles an hour is when you're riding a bicycle or when you're skating or, or something along those lines? And we've, we've got a great deal of positive feedback from the community on those, and we'll continue to deploy those as we go forward also. Any questions on the enforcement side?
Mr. Webb.
Of those citations that were issued, how many were issued to segways users?
As far as I know, no segue citation. Segways are authorized on the boardwalk as long as they're not speeding or doing something unsafe, and to my knowledge, there have not been any segue citations issued.
So, well, the, what, can you give us an example of what the largest number of, percentage of the types of citations that you've issued?
Yes, sir. They, they broke it down into three areas primarily. One was unsafe operation on the boardwalk, and those would be when we could see a activity which is unsafe and it's, and it's accidents, someone who's clearly speeding and, and going much, much faster, whipping in and out of traffic. We only wrote about four of those. The other one was for skateboarding on the, on the boardwalk. That was by far the, the largest number of citations we wrote. We wrote about 180 of those. And then the last one was other prohibited vehicles, powered scooters, powered bicycles, and I believe we wrote seven of those.
What about surrey cycles?
Surrey cycles, we've written a number for surrey cycles, unauthorized vehicles. That'd be the power scooter, something along those lines. We have written several. Most of the surrey cycles, we've been doing a lot of advisories on those to ensure compliance with the, with both the business people that rent them as well as the operators, but there have been citations been issued for it also.
Thank you.
I'm Brad Summers with the Public Works Department, and I'm going to be briefly going over some of the engineering solutions that were proposed and reviewed by the committee. During the initial review of the existing, we looked at items such as pavement markings, signage, as well as striping. And with this, we looked at, say, the pavement markings, realized there were quite a few out there, and they actually had a message that was conveyed that was in line with the goals of the committee, so items such as that were to remain in place. Looking at the signage and striping, we did see some room for improvement. This led to a striping demonstration project that was along a section of the oceanfront between 8th Street and 9th Street, which actually replaced the skip yellow center line along with a solid yellow center line, with the intent of trying to better manage the flow of traffic along the oceanfront in a keep-right rules of the roads, excuse me, rules of the road sort of way. After a review of the findings, it was actually determined that the benefits of this sort of striping actually did not outweigh, excuse me, justify the, the cost as well as the inconvenience of installing this along the rest of the length of the oceanfront. So the striping actually was determined, and, and we decided to keep it as is. Moving along to signage, we were tasked with coming up with several unique and eye-catching signs that had a clear and concise message, message that would be something easily seen as, as travelers were coming down the oceanfront. Now, we reviewed several different shapes, sizes, messages, colors, and everything you can imagine, and these were the three that we finalized and came up with. With approval of these signs, staff actually was able to deploy these along several locations along the oceanfront walk, and we actually have had some pretty good reviews of these signs. Now, looking forward to the next step, and still related to the signage, we understand that any project such as this actually does rely greatly on enforcement to be successful. And with this, we do require, or are required to have what we call a regulatory or prohibition sign, such as the one seen on the left. Now, looking at this, we need to keep in mind, of course, that this is a draft, these items can be added to or taken away before we come up with the final language. Posted underneath that would be another speed limit sign, something a little more conventional that we're used to seeing, and this would actually replace what's already out or was existing on the oceanfront walk. Once we've determined the final language for the proposed signage, we'll be able to deploy these signs in in the locations that, that have not been updated.
The no sign there, that's just, that's going to be on the boardwalk, right? That's not at the street end sign?
It, it's, and when we talked about this, there were two signs we'll actually see at the street ends. One faces the boardwalk travelers, and that's what this is intended to be. There's another sign that's intended for the beach users, which actually lists quite a few, quite a few more.
Yeah, I thought there was a few missing off there. Okay.
That's correct. And I guess that wraps up.
Counsel, we tried to give you a fairly comprehensive staff report on this, so I'll just briefly summarize the committee recommendations to give, I believe, at least one committee member a chance to talk to you about the recommendations, and also give the public a chance to comment as well. The committee is recommending no change to the eight mile per hour speed limit. They feel that the education and enforcement is working. They should, they believe we should continue to allow bikes, inline skates, roller skates, and razors and scooters along the oceanfront. They would like us to continue to ban surries, simply because of the size of the surrey cycle, skateboards, and motorized devices. And those are all currently banned under the existing ordinance. The two new additions for your consideration and direction this evening are whether or not we should ban segways on the oceanfront boardwalk and on Bellevue Lane. The committee had two main concerns with the segways. First, the size of the segue device itself, and the second concern they had was, I have to double check, it was, the segue would be the only motorized device permitted along the oceanfront. And we are seeing, the residents are telling us, a proliferation in motorized and electric devices. We're seeing electric bikes, the motorized skateboards, I believe there's even a motorized cooler that drives around town. And they believe that we should be consistent along the oceanfront walk. And the final request would be to require permits for segue tour operators. Our local segue operator does a great job with a safety program and setting safety standards. There are, however, outside groups that come to town and bring larger tours, and we think to be consistent, there should be a permit put in place. So at this time, staff is available for questions, and I believe the committee is here as well.
Councilmember Gardner?
The permit, this is, is this an either or, or this is ban the segways on the oceanfront, but then anybody who wanted to take a tour with segways anyplace else in the city?
Right.
What is our current law as far as segways on sidewalks? I mean, can they go on sidewalks?
They're currently permitted on sidewalks.
So they could come elsewhere in the city and- So they could come elsewhere in the city and go on the sidewalks?
Right.
Okay. So we would move the problem, perhaps?
Yes.
Any other comments? Mr. Webb.
I guess I'm a little, little baffled why we would be picking on Segways since our enforcement issues, we haven't shown that there is a safety problem or hazard. I've, as far as the size of a Segway is concerned, it's no wider than a three-wheel bicycle would be, so I, I can't see that size is really an issue from the standpoint of using space on the sidewalk. There isn't a huge proliferation of Segways, I don't believe. I agree that, that a chain of Segways in a tour of 10 or 12 going down the sidewalk could be very disruptive, and so I, I think that that's a great idea, is to have some permits, but I really don't feel very comfortable taking that type of approach to totally ban the Segways. I mean, I'm getting almost old enough to where I may need to need, need, won't be able, won't be walking down anymore. I'm going to be wa, riding down, and I might want to have something like that to, to get me around town, and I think that that's a, it's new technology, and a lot of times we are afraid of new technology, and we say bad things about it before we really learn about it. So I, I personally am, am not very supportive of a total ban of Segways unless we can show that there is some actual safety problem related to them.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor Prokhorov.
Yeah, just, just to provide a quick response to that, I, I've thought a lot about this, and the, the issue that's of concern to me is that when I ask myself the question, would I want to authorize an electric-powered, an electric motor-powered bicycle on the, on the boardwalk? It's an obvious answer to me. Why, heck no, I wouldn't want to do that. And when you stand back from it qualitatively, a Segway is really no different than an electric bike from the standpoint that it's a two-wheeled vehicle, it's electrically powered, and moves up and down the boardwalk. And the problem is, it, it, when people see one electrically powered vehicle on the boardwalk, it's easy for them to assume that their electrical, or perhaps gas-powered vehicle, is okay on the boardwalk, and it, it just makes it that much harder to get the kind of compliance that we'd like to see with the elimination of powered vehicles. Now, having said that, I, to the extent that if there were a handicapped person who, for example, you know, like we do in cars, where they display a handicapped placard, were wanting to use a Segway, I'd be fine with that, with a, some sort of a handicap placard notification on it, or with them, I would be okay with that, just like I would be okay with a wheelchair, and am okay with a wheelchair on the boardwalk for truly handicapped people. But it's very clear that the usage of these machines is by far, in a way, not for the benefit of handicapped people. Just in a casual observation, that's clearly true. So, you know, those were, those are some thoughts, you know, in addition to Councilmember Webbs.
Let me open this up then for public comment before bringing it back to the council for direction. Does anyone wish to comment from the public? Please come forward to the microphone, state your name, please. You'll have three minutes for your comments, please.
Good afternoon, Honorable Mayor and City Council members. My name is Mike Beck. I am a resident of Orange County for more than 50 years. I'm, was spent years on the Board of Directors of the Silverado Majeska Recreation and Parks District. I'm a docent that leads hikes for both the Irvine Ranch Conservancy and the City of Irvine, and I'm an officer of several nonprofit public access organizations. I'm here to comment today on the use of Segways on the boardwalk. My, my dad is here. He was injured in the Korean War, and he's not able to walk with me long distances because of his injuries. We enjoy very much riding Segways on the, on the boardwalk, and because we don't own them, we, we like to rent them from Orange County Segways. I've ridden Segways with my dad all over the United States, including the Gettysburg Battlefield, where the federal government allows this to happen, and I am just seriously concerned that the, I've had a lot of inter, interaction with different user groups, and it seems like it's always the newest user group that gets picked on, because people already feel that the public, open spaces are too crowded. I don't think there's any problem with the Segways, there hasn't been any demonstrated, and I would recommend, my advice would be, if you are having any kind of a problem thinking about Segways, I agree with the committee's recommendations that the city should require permits for Segway tour operators, and I believe that maybe there should be a limit to the amount of vehicles that are allowed in each tour, six or eight vehicles. I don't think it's too excessive, and I would really like to see you still allow the public to use these vehicles. It's kind of a thing of the future, and since we don't have any history of problems, there's lots of history of bike problems on the boardwalk. Thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else like to speak? Please come forward. If you'd like to come closer and get in position so that we can hear everyone who wants to speak, please feel free to do that, too. That might be helpful. Please state your name, please.
My name is Scott McElroy. Good afternoon. I reside on the Balboa Peninsula, the Director of the Balboa Village Improvement District, and I'm also General Manager of the Segway Orange County Store, which is located in the Balboa Village. Over the past four years, I've trained thousands of individuals ages nine to 93 how to properly operate Segways, and during this timeframe, I've personally conducted well over a thousand tours of Newport Beach without incident. The fact is that our safety record is flawless. Segway tour guests have never experienced injury. Instead, our guests have fully enjoyed their Segway riding experience and historical tour of the Balboa Peninsula and the Balboa Village area. Furthermore, pedestrians of foot who share the oceanfront boardwalk have never been injured by a Segway tour guest, so. Just like many of you in this room today, I, I use the boardwalk to jog, bike, and stroll with friends and family along the oceanfront, and while jogging, I, I do have to run around people, walking their dogs, and yeah, it's inconvenient, but just like everyone else, I, I share the path, and if I'm riding my bike, I slow down out of the way to circumnavigate the double-width baby strollers, and it's okay with me, because I love kids, and I, I think it's great when parents spend time with them and enjoying the boardwalk. If I'm walking, I move over to allow the bikes and the rollerbladers to pass, so is it a hassle? Yeah, sometimes it is, but the fact is that everyone, residents, visitors, and business owners truly appreciate the blessing here of the oceanfront boardwalk. Now, I greatly appreciate Mayor Hen, Hen and my fellow residents and our police department and city staff making a priority to ensure the safety of all oceanfront boardwalk users. I realize that while it may not be, may not be possible to ensure a perfect level of safety on the oceanfront boardwalk, that it's possible to minimize the risk of incidents without fully prohibiting the freedoms everyone presently shares and enjoys. As such, I believe it's important to factually address, dispel, and dismiss certain fear, uncertainty, and doubt tactics promoted by a select few. Instead, on principle, I believe it's prudent to remain open-minded and implement a balance of constraints recommended by Segway Orange County to the Boardwalk Safety Steering Committee. Such constraints include minimizing boardwalk congestion by placing fixed limits on Segway tour group size, operating the tours single, single file, prohibiting Segway tours on Easter Memorial Day, the Fourth of July, and Labor Day, routing the majority of Segway tours down the least congested portion of the boardwalk between Main Street and E Street in the direction of the wedge, ensuring the safety of all boardwalk users by enforcing the eight mile an hour speed limit for all bikes, rollerbladers, and Segways, to require all Segway tour guests to wear helmets and complete a Segway safety orientation training session. So I, may I request a couple extra seconds to complete this?
Just, yeah, wrap it up.
Thank you. Over the past four years, a proliferation of Segways on the boardwalk has not occurred. At nearly $6,000, the cost of a Segway remains a significant barrier to entry. Segways have proven, have a proven positive safety record, they're environmentally friendly, stop in half the distance of a bicycle, and feature an integrated 12 mile per hour speed limiter. This differentiates them from the electric bicycles. They're relatively quiet and at 25 inches in width, the Segway is less width than the handlebars on most beach cruisers. I therefore respectfully request we refrain from considering a ban on the use of Segways along the oceanfront boardwalk. Instead, we want to work with the Oceanfront Safety Committee and City Council to find middle ground, ensuring all interested parties can share the joy and natural beauty of Newport Beach. Thank you for your consideration.
Next, please.
Hi.
Hi.
My name's Dick Ashoff, and I've been a resident on Balboa Island for over 30 years. I also own the Old Bubbles Restaurant down in the village. I've been there 10 years. I've watched businesses come and go, mostly fail, all of them. This is a good business. The village needs it. It also, well, I've been on two tours with Scott, with my son, and he takes you all around Newport Beach. He introduces you to different things in, in the area. I've lived here, graduated from UCI. I didn't know about, is it?
What's the fish factory?
Bear Fight. Went in there for dinner, came out, now we go there all the time. It's more than just going on the boardwalk, and I understand how valuable the boardwalks are, especially the one on Balboa Island, and the one on, on Bayfront, and the one on oceanfront, and we have to share them. But he has no accidents, zero. You can't compete with that. The time that we spent on the tour, that we spent on the boardwalk, was probably less than 15% of the tour. He is very responsive. He watches where we're going, he watches how we cross streets, he is very attentive. He even turns down the radio in certain places on the boardwalk, because he knows not to bother people. Alls I can say is that if you haven't been on a Segway, before you vote, go down and get on one, and follow the tour, and see what happens. That's all I got to say. Thank you.
Next, please.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and Councilmembers. My name is Epi Lopez, and I'm an attorney. I also represent Orange County Segway. The, I've read that steering report. The advisory report cites two non-factual reasons for supporting their proposed ban of Segways. The report specifically states intimidation of pedestrians, and two, that the Segways potentially encourage the use of other type of, types of motorized vehicles. The report does not identify a single incident or accident involving Segways in support of their reasoning. The report itself admits that this is only a potential gateway towards other banned uses. Yet, based on this potential confusion, the report requests a total ban on current legal use of Segways. We don't believe that the current legal use of Segways leads to other illegal acts. Other illegal uses are already illegal to use on the boardwalk, and the Newport Beach Police Department has adequate laws to prevent those illegal uses. As for possibly creating intimidation to pedestrians, we have contained, I have presented, and I'll present to you, the true facts concerning Segways for your review. The true facts were, were tested by the U.S. Department of Transportation, Federal Highway Administration. The results reached by the U.S. Department of Transportation clearly prove that Segways are safe. The facts and results are only surprising in how safe Segways truly are. Mr. Mayor compared the use of a Segway to a motorized bike. A more accurate reflection would be to compare it to a manual wheelchair. For instance, the distance needed for Segways to safely come to a stop is much shorter than bicycles and skaters, and only slightly longer than that of a manual wheelchair. You can actually stop a Segway quicker than you can stop a manual wheelchair. In addition to the demonstrated safety of Segways, Segway, Segway Orange County has implanted even more stringent riding requirements to make sure that the Segway tour participants are courteous to their fellow boardwalk users. We have also attached a summary of their courtesy and practices that they implement in giving their tours, and the report states that the local businesses' impact would be minimal. This is absolutely not correct. The ban would put Segway Orange County out of business. This would result in a loss of jobs, loss of tax revenues for the city of Newport, and the city, the Orange County Segway promotes tourism. In promoting tourism to the city of Newport Beach, we also contribute to the local economy by bringing many visitors into the city of Newport Beach. Our patrons eat at our fellow shop owners' restaurants, shop at Newport Beach stores, and stay at Newport Beach hotels. Our fellow store owners and businesses believe that they also benefit from our patrons and do not agree with the study's report that the impact would be minimal. I have tonight a petition signed from 51 of the local businesses. 51 businesses signed a petition, petition in three days to oppose the ban on Segways on the boardwalk. Additionally, this business contributes to the community over the past five years. May I take one minute to continue?
Just go ahead and wrap up.
Thank you. They have contributed to many causes over the community past. They have, the donors of these community organizations also believe that the impact would not be minimal. So we ask you to oppose the ban. The fellow businesses oppose the ban, the community opposes the ban, and Captain Dale Johnson found no incidences of any accidents or instances of, of the Segway. We ask that you please do not do this to put them out of business.
Clarification? You said that by banning them from oceanfront, that in itself would put, although they still go elsewhere on the, on the tours that they take?
Yes, that is correct. And 51 other businesses also believe that.
Well, so, but how many tours are conducted currently by the operator? I understand it's four or five tours, one of which, one of which goes westbound on the oceanfront walk.
If you like, I can bring the, to address that question?
We offer, we offer four tour routes. One that heads down toward the wedge, and the one that heads up toward Newport Pier are both beginner routes. The other two are for people that have gone with us in the past. They route over the auto ferry across Balboa Island to the Back Bay area, and then the fourth one goes down toward Corona del Mar and Corona del Mar State Beach.
How many tours do you have per year?
It varies. It's typically somewhere in the neighborhood of 300 to 400. So over four years that I've been conducting tours, it's approximately 1,500.
And as far as use of those tours and times of those tours?
Don't leave. Whoops, wait a minute, Scott.
As far as the use and times of those tours, Orange County Segway would be happy to work with the City Council and anyone else to conduct those tours at a time less frequent. In fact, they've already stopped giving tours on the days when the boardwalk is most crowded.
And do you not also sell Segways?
Yes, but the issue is feasibility of the business, so approximately 50% of our revenue comes from the sales of the Segways and maintenance, and the other 50% comes from the tour operation. So it's the difference between having a feasible business and not.
One out of the four tours going away leaves three out of four, plus all your sales activity.
Both beginner routes, so I have no, no beginner route, is, is what the issue is. It forces the beginner route out onto a narrower path on the sidewalks.
The other beginner route heads east to the wedge, is that what you're?
Yeah, correct, yeah.
And approximately out of those 400 a year, how many of them are the, the beach routes? Did you say half?
No, probably 95%.
So 95% of them are the beach routes?
Yeah, oh, yeah.
So the vast majority of the 400 go on?
Absolutely, yeah.
And you're open seven days a week?
No, we're open, we're closed Tuesdays and Thursdays. In the, in the winter, we're, we're closed on Tuesdays in the summertime, but we limit the number of tours. I think we, we run max three a day, so.
Three tours a day?
Yeah.
And that's, so?
At the most. There's, there's, most days we don't have, you know, we'll say, you know.
And what's the maximum number of vehicles you allow per tour?
At present, it's eight.
Eight, okay.
If we have more, if we have larger groups sent from, like Pelican or the Newport Coast Marriott, what we do is we split up the, we stage the start times by 15 minutes. So we'll have eight, then we'll release another eight, and then we'll set another eight on a different route.
And how often would you get groups from the local hotels?
Typically, in the wintertime, we actually get more than in the summertime. Typically, in the wintertime, we actually get more than in the summertime. So I would say we get one every two weeks. Occasionally, I'll get a cluster of two back-to-back.
Okay, thank you.
And if you need to adjust that, they simply, they could adjust that. There does not need to be a total ban when a lesser remedy would work.
Thank you. Please state your name, sir.
Sure. My name's Joe Reese, and I was actually one of the committee members that sat on this committee. And the, the only thing I really want to talk about is the Segways, and I want to tell you that we spent months discussing this, and it was a very difficult decision, very hard decision, and something that, you know, was hard for us to come to a conclusion on it, just like it's going to be for you. But I can tell you some of the things that, that we thought about, so you know what was in our mind when we were thinking it. And that is that the weight of these Segways is about 105 pounds. The weight of the electric bicycle averages about 60 pounds. So when you look at the, the weight of these Segways, I think that has to be taken into consideration. When you look at the size of them being 25 inches across, that isn't just a small bike size, it's actually double the bike size of what it is that's going down the roadway. And as Scott indicated, that when you're going down the path, I mean, I do this every day, whether I'm running or on my bike, you're going in and out of people constantly as you're going through there. When they go with their tours of eight, you don't go in and out. You sit to the side and you wait for them to go by before anyone goes by. And they are intimidating from that standpoint. They cause everyone to stop as they go by because you can envision this large group of people going through. So I think that that is, is part of the concern that we had when we were looking at this is, is that we looked at the safety on the boardwalk and the number of people using the boardwalk, and is this really, truly something that we need on the boardwalk and is a safe environment for them to be on our boardwalk? And then finally, you know, other cities have banned it, and they banned it not in their entire city, they banned it in the over-concentrated areas where people used the walkways, you know, like they do here, and they banned it just specifically for that area for that reason. And I think that that's part of what should be taken into consideration, too. It's not a banning of the entire city, it's a banning in that, in just that particular area. And I got to say, when we looked at the electric bikes, I mean, the electric bikes, people will be here next saying the same thing. The average of the electric bikes, they weigh about 60 pounds, and I don't know the stopping power, I really don't, but they average about 60 pounds in weight. So to tell a person on an electric bike or a person on an electric scooter that's got brakes that they can't go on the boardwalk, yet we're going to allow Segways to go on the boardwalk, I think that is not a clear message that you're sending, and I don't think it's truly fair. Because how can you tell one group they can't be here, but the other group they can be here? And I think it's very clear to everyone, you know, right off the bat, they can't. And I think that there are plenty of other areas in Newport Beach that Segway can operate, and I would like to see them operate. I think they are a good business, and I think they should look at that for their future as far as moving forward. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Joe, what cities have banned these in, what parts of their city?
San Francisco is one of them, then Key West, Florida has banned them, and recently La Mirada has banned them also.
And what areas of those cities are?
I don't know the exact areas, I just know those are the cities.
You mentioned that it was very intimidating to have a whole row of those, but do you have the same feeling if you have an individual Segway going through there that they're, they're that intimidating?
Yeah, I, I think it's, it's just that I, when we looked at it from a committee's standpoint, we looked at it from the standpoint of the, the size, the weight, and the speed. They can go up to 12 and a half miles per hour on the speed on them. So you've got something 105 mile, 105 pounds doing 12 and a half miles per hour, coming at you as well as the body weight, I think that is intimidating, and I think that is dangerous. Because if someone, like a little kid walking across, going to the beach from the street, gets hit, you don't have time to stop, that's going to cause serious injury. I'm thankful that there hasn't been, but, you know, we don't have, other than tours, we don't have a large number of individual Segways on the, on the boardwalk at this time.
Thank you, or was it asking?
Council members, ladies and gentlemen, members of the community that are interested in a safe oceanfront boardwalk, I share your concern. I would like to clarify a few things. The boardwalk?
State your name, please, sir.
I'm sorry. My name is Dick Burke, and I am one of the two owners of Segway Orange County. We have a main office in Anaheim, which we can't do tours of because it's an light industrial area and it's just unsafe. There's too many freeways, on and off ramps in the area. I'd like to clarify a couple of things about, about the tours. The oceanfront boardwalk is the main interest in any group that comes down and wants to tour Newport Beach. It's unfortunate for everybody but tour operators. If, if you ban the Segways on the oceanfront boardwalk, it will just create problems for us in the other areas. The other three tours that we do, we do very few of them, it requires an experienced operator, and it just doesn't work out for first-time operators. 95 percent of our tours are on the boardwalk. If you ban the Segways on the boardwalk, you don't have to worry about permits for other operators because they won't come down. Most of the tours that I know of along the coast, they want to go along the oceanfront, Long Beach, oceanfront, Santa Barbara, oceanfront. More than likely, in a period of probably less than a year, we won't be able to keep our store open. And we have half of our three-year lease still to worry about. That really bothers me. As far as Bellevue Lane, I have instructed my manager and tour guide not to use it. I would be very interested if there's anybody here from Bellevue Lane that has seen one there recently, because we long ago said, "Don't use Bellevue Lane." That was one of the compromises that we made originally with the study session. The one thing that really upsets me is that we weren't informed of this particular study session until a few days ago. We had to ramp up and really get things moving, and I apologize for the time this is taking, but it's just been very difficult for us. I also want to comment that you're talking about the width of a bicycle. Well, which bicycle are you talking about? If you're talking about a recumbent bike, they are wider than a Segway, if you're talking about. There's a lot of other things that are wider than a Segway that shouldn't just ban us, or should ban the rest of them.
I thought your time was up.
I could talk for hours, but I understand my time is up. Thank you very much for listening.
Come on down.
Hi, my name is Tommy Conforti, and I moved here two years ago from Italy. And I've had, I have leukemia. It's been five years, and I've recently got relapse, so I can't walk much, I can't ride bikes. And I, I've been saving for a long time for a Segway, and I think the Segway, I always wear a helmet, so it's, I've never had an accident yet. I let my, I, every person who asks me to use it, I give them, Scott is giving me lessons of how to teach people, and I, for now, have never gotten any complaints. I've always gone on the boardwalk, never gotten complaints from people. I, I do admit, I've gone a couple times on Bellevue, and I do understand it's a only walk pedestrian street, so I, I couldn't do less with that. But I think the oceanfront is so beautiful, and it's one of the places that people go the most, and I don't, I don't think it's a big, I, I just get compliments when I go on, on the Segway for, on the boardwalk. People have stared at me, asked me where I got it, and I think it's a great, for Scott's company, it's a great publicity for people to go on the boardwalk because it's the most frequent place to go. And I, I actually just, I've been saving for three years now, and I spent my whole savings, and I have my own Segway that I got last Christmas for myself. And I think they are a great vehicle, that I don't think it should be banned from the boardwalk because it is a beautiful place to be going on the boardwalk. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Tommy, for coming down tonight.
Good afternoon. I'm Bill Martin, and I'm representing this afternoon the Central Newport Beach Community Association. We represent interested people, residents within the area between Newport Pier and the Balboa Pier. I realize this is not a public hearing, this is a study session, but I did briefly want to remind you of our association's policies, which were adopted in, these specific policies were adopted in 2006. I'll read them. "We support the preservation of the oceanfront walk and edgewater, Buena Vista Walk, as pedestrian promenades, and we support the use of the oceanfront walk by bicyclists and roller skaters at speeds less than eight miles per hour." Our other policy, number three, supports consistent and aggressive police enforcement to stop the operation on the oceanfront walk, on the edgewater through Buena Vista Walk, and all the peninsula sidewalks of skateboards, of all human-powered conveyances with four or more wheels, all motorized conveyances, whether gas or electric, and all electric personal mobility assistive devices, so as to maintain the safety and quality and life of the peninsula residents and guests. These policies were put together after a great deal of discussion at our annual meetings. Over the last, I'd say, four to five years, there's been a significant noticeable increase in the number of pedestrians and bicycles using the oceanfront sidewalk, particularly since in the last two years, as a result of, perhaps the result of the recession, more people are coming to the beaches. Anyway, we do see increased congestions, not just during the summer weekends, but also during the week during the summer. Anyway, I have two specific suggestions with regard to the policy that's been drafted. One is that rather than refer to Segways, you may want to refer to the more generic term of electric personal mobility assist devices, since that term is defined in the California Vehicle Code at the request of the Segway Corporation. Anyway, because there could be other two-wheeled self-riding devices come on the market in competition with Segway. So I would think you'd want a more. Let me make one other point, and that's that there have been several other people in our association who are concerned about the fact that these, that banning Segways on the oceanfront might prevent handicap people from using them. And our understanding at the time, we didn't include that in our policies, because our understanding at the time was that any motorized conveyance operated by handicapped persons on the, on sidewalks was permitted under California law. I was not able to find that in any of the California law or the American Disabilities Act, the federal law. So you may want to make an exception for that in your policies.
Thank you, Mr. Martin.
Yes.
My name is Max Liskin. I've spoken before to guys before, and the first thing I'd like to say about this issue is, very early on, I was a person who was opposed to Segways, and several of the current council people were on the council going back in 2005, and I think in a very open-minded way said, "Let's see what happens." And it's been five years, and I think we're back here again. The second thing I'd like to say is I think that Scott has done a good job of running Segway. But the problem of Scott running Segway is if Scott decides to leave, or somebody else buys the business, we can no longer rely upon having Scott. So I think, and if you look at Segway itself, I understand the company was recently sold, and Kleiner Perkins, which was the investing, the venture cap firm behind it, on 60 Minutes sort of jokingly said it was one of their greatest failures. And I think that speaks to the popularity of this device throughout the world in the United States. It has been a failure. I think Newport Beach, we all do things here to enjoy the community. One of the things I do is I run my dogs on the beach. It's illegal. And the dog catcher sees me, he's going to give me a ticket. And to some of my neighbors that use Segways, you know, I don't have a problem if people use a Segway, and basically with Scott, tours have been, you know, I think, well-run. But if we do ban Segways and people want to ride them on the boardwalk, I think there's a little risk, but probably no more than the risk I take when I run my dogs on the beach. But I'm ready to take the ticket because it's something I want to do, and I conduct myself, I think, in a safe way. If we talk about the financial wherewithal of people to bear those tickets, well, Segway's a $5,000 device. I think that there's a little room there to pay the ticket. As far as the Segway business itself, just look at the cost of ownership of a home in Newport, when you figure the cost of capital, your taxes. I think that dwarfs the consideration of one business. Now, if you look at the one business down in the Balboa area, that area needs businesses. They've been there five years, nothing has changed. Maybe the new parking structure, maybe expanding the historical museum will do something, but contrary to what another gentleman said, I don't think it's providing an anchor to bring commerce. What it is providing is an encouragement for other motorized devices. There's been a proliferation of electric bikes. What I think about the electric bikes, and I want to bring that up, is I don't know about accidents or not, but I want to make a point that you guys consider any electric bike that's rented in this town has a large placard, because that's the only way the police are going to know when that guy's running down the boardwalk on his electric bike, that it's an electric bike. But going back to the Segways, very simply, we all want to enjoy Newport. The boardwalk, why people like it, is they have an uninterrupted stretch to ride their bikes. If I'm on a tour, I don't think it's a terrible compromise for the Segway people to go up to the boardwalk, stop, and look around, then get back on their Segways and go down the alleys. And a lot of people are used to going down alleys in Newport if you look where the Peninsula Oceanfront Walk ends.
Thank you, Mr. Liskin.
Thank you.
Next speaker. I want to give everybody who wants to speak the chance to speak, but we have a very big closed-session agenda, and I'd like to move on, and if something's already been said, just say "me too," and we'll understand.
Hello, my name is Catherine Huddleston. I'm Tommy's mother. We live on Plaza del Norte, and I'd like to speak as a, as an overprotective mother. I was very dubious of the Segway at the beginning and slightly worried when Tommy wanted to buy one, and I must say that I've had to reconsider that worry. I've seen Tommy teach all of the kids in the neighborhood and around the L Street Park how to go on the Segway, and even his eight-year-old sister has learned like that. It's almost easier than to learn to go on a bicycle. I found surprisingly that it was very safe. It was extremely easy to stop, it's extremely easy to control, it's extremely manageable. I've also noticed that when we do go on the boardwalk, often I will bike behind him, and we are often passed by normal bicycles. So the speed and the danger of a speed does not seem to be, in my experience, an issue. Another thing that I've noted is how much more dangerous it is to go on the sidewalks because of cars backing out, because of people coming in and out of stores. The boardwalk instead is a nice, clear path where it's, you know, there's already kind of a sense of awareness for the bicycles, for the, you know, the movement, the runners, the rollerbladers. So I think that that is one of the safer places to actually use the Segway. And the last of my observations is even walking or doing, or riding box on a Segway, it's easy to find a chain of eight. it's easy to find a chain of eight bicycles in a row that you have to pass on a busy day, because there are a lot of people using the boardwalk, and, you know, you can find a stroller, a bicycle, you know, a child. On a busy day, there is always a parade of people, and I don't think it's only the Segway that might cause a blockage in traffic. And that's what I have to say.
Thank you for coming down today. Yes, sir.
My name is Chuck Remley. I live on Balboa Peninsula. I own a Segway. I originally got my Segway because I had a congenital hip problem, and it got too painful to walk from Island Avenue to the center of Balboa to go to dinner. Since then, I've had a hip replacement, and now it's just a very expensive toy. But it is, but it is useful for coming down here to City Hall, for coming to the bank, for going to the post office. I don't have to get in my car or my truck and find a place to park, or spew pollutants in the air. There are some things that have been said that aren't quite true. My Segway does not weigh 105 pounds. It weighs 80 pounds. It's no wider than my shoulders, and so if I'm walking, it's not any wider than I am. Segways have three different governor systems on them. One is six miles an hour, one is eight miles an hour, one is 12 and 1/2 miles an hour, and by which key you use, which magnetic key you use, that determines what the governor's setting is. And so a Segway rider with an eight-mile-an-hour governor is maybe the only one on the boardwalk that knows exactly how fast they are going. You cannot override that governor. If you press forward to try to override the governor, the Segway will back off and not let you do that. So it's, it's pretty safe, and it does stay within the speed limit. I can stop my Segway a lot quicker than I can a bike, just because it's a power-assist stop, whereas a bicycle, especially a bicycle with brake pads on the rims, is a friction stop, and you don't just stop on a dime with those. Some of the, some of the users of the boardwalk are not very courteous, but I've never seen a Segway person that didn't stop and wait for an opening before passing a slower person. But I have seen a lot of bicycles weave in and out and come really close to my Segway while we're both using the boardwalk. In fact, I have had an accident with my Segway, when a bicycle ran straight into me while he was talking to somebody else who was riding alongside of me. Please don't ban them from the boardwalk. As is pointed out in the committee report, there's only a handful of us, and we do enjoy using those Segways to get around town. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else? Please come on down. We are a little constrained today, so we want to make sure everybody who wants to speak gets a chance to speak, so if you're going to speak, queue on up here.
Hi, Frank Cutler, 12 Bay Island. I know a few of you, so nice to see you. I actually wasn't going to speak. I probably should just say "me too," but I quite like Tommy, and I know Scott, and I just wanted to let you know I'm going to speak to his experiences. I've done the beginning tours with him at the six and the eight-mile governor, and I think the guy's an amazing guy. I've brought lots of my friends down with him. We've run around on his various tours, and I never even knew that Bellevue Avenue existed, so, until I was with Scott. So I can't speak to all of the individual use out there, because I don't hardly ever see a Segway unless I see Scott and one of his three or four people on the tour. I've never seen a problem on the boardwalk. I've been around here for about 12 years now, and I think you start with your recommendations slowly. That would be my advice. I think permits are great, but I don't think, I don't think bans are the way to go. I think there's been some very interesting, thoughtful conversation here, especially Don. I thought that was very poignant, what you pointed out. And I'd like to treat all of you to a tour on me, I think, as a group. Let's see, one, two, three, that fits right into the tour. I'd love to sponsor that and get you down there. But I just want to say that the guy is so safe, I went in there with a lot of fun, and just like most guys, with my friends, and, you know, let's go have a great time, and I'm telling you, we took it very seriously by the time we left his office. And we had a lot of fun, and we were probably the slowest people on the boardwalk, and I'd hate to see it go away. I think it's great for Newport Beach.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, let me bring this back to the council. Are there comments? Mr. Hen?
Let me see if we can bring this to a close. I know we're anxious to get on to other business. I'd like to take a little straw vote here and posit for you to vote on this idea. The Central Newport Association is against it. The Balboa Peninsula Point Association took an informal survey of their membership, and it was two to one against it. So I'm confident that the residents in the area, a majority of them, are against having it on there. Let me, let me posit this. To ban the use of the Segways going east from the business location here, which is roughly at Balboa Pier, ban the tour, only the tour that goes east on the Oceanfront Walk, which after all is a very congested area, that's the reason that we're here discussing this, to allow the use of the Segway, though, with anybody that can demonstrate a handicap, and third, to ask the city staff to work with the Segway owner and to craft some sort of forbearance for that business, such that they have time to either adjust to this change or not be penalized for some fairly extended period of time until it would take effect for the tour operator. So those are the three things. I guess what I'd like to do is get a straw vote here on-
So they could go west towards the wedge? Is that what you're saying?
That's correct. To allow for the tour that goes west toward the wedge, so.
You got it backwards.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I got my east and west backwards. East, to allow the tour that goes east to the wedge, to ban the tour that goes west to Newport Pier. Sorry, I correct people all the time on that, and I made my mistake myself.
And then where do Segway enthusiasts such as Tommy fit into your sort of scheme?
They could go to the wedge.
Yeah, they can, they can ride the Segway anywhere else they want, except for that one stretch of the Oceanfront Walk. So that's, so can we get a quick straw vote on that?
Well, so we're only banning Segways on that one stretch of the boardwalk?
Right.
I've got a comment, yes.
I'd say at least we'll have further chance to talk about it when it comes back, look at it.
Yes, that's right. I mean, the idea would be give staff direction to craft something to come back to us based on those lines.
You know, I guess I came in here to this meeting thinking that, yeah, we were going to go ahead and ban the Segways, but it kind of brings me back to the meeting we did have back in 2005, and I was listening to all this, and I, you know, I guess I'm along the lines with Don. I think that this is more of a solution looking for a problem with these Segways. There's not a whole lot of them. There's been no documented incidents. I agree that the thing is not any wider than a bicycle. My handlebars, my beach cruiser are at least as wide as a Segway. I mean, I'm holding them out like this, so, got to be wider than that. And assuming that they're willing to work with the governor, certainly 12 miles an hour is not suitable or safe on the boardwalk, but, you know, the six or eight mile, or even just saying six miles with that, miles per hour with that, you know, I think it's suitable. I mean, we were looking for businesses in Balboa Village. This is a successful business. Why would we want to push this guy out of town? Go somewhere else, down to Laguna or wherever else he can go and have the same kind of a beach experience. And I just don't, I just don't see where it's risen to the level. I agree, the bicyclists, I think, are much more dangerous. I mean, if we're going to be banning things to make the boardwalk safe, then let's ban all of it and just make it a pedestrian boardwalk. So that would be my opinion.
Councilmember Dale.
Yeah, I think for me to support a ban, I'd like to have more data that there's actually accidents and safety problems, because anecdotally, I can think of, you know, for example, recumbent bicycle, you know, sit-down bicycle, they travel in packs, and you don't want to encounter some of those, and sometimes motor coordination isn't quite as good as motorized coordination, transportation. So I think there's a lot of uncertainty when you get, you know, somebody on a bicycle that doesn't have a consistent, regular beat or cadence. So I'd like to see more before putting in a ban, is how I look at it.
Mr. Selig.
I agree with Councilman Rosansky. I just don't see where we've been presented any data that there's a problem here. And I, I won't repeat what he said, but me too.
Well, and I'll, and I'll say sort of me too, too. I sort of came prepared to vote for the ban, but I've become more convinced that this is a solution in search of a problem. I think we probably ought to, you know, if we need to regulate the tours, let's regulate the tours, but let's not ban them, and I, and I don't see any point in banning individual usage.
I think we need to regulate the tours.
Then I can count a four, so let me, let me suggest then an alternative set of guidance for staff, and that is that staff working with the tour operator and the committee craft a set of regulations for a permit that would allow for the continued operation of the tours on the Oceanfront Walk, but with a set of rules and guidelines that hopefully we can all agree on makes sense in terms of safety and usage.
Well, if we're going to do that, why don't we set up permits for all the bicyclists riding through town in packs? I mean, they're as irritating as anything. I mean, where are we going to stop with this stuff? I just, I just don't see the necessity for the, you know, another permit in the city to regulate tours.
I agree.
Well, I'll moderate my, I'm willing to listen to some ideas on that, because this is a business operating now on the boardwalk, and it's not just individuals going down there. So, and I imagine that the owners are amenable to this. Do you have a problem with talking to the city about-
Let's, let's not, we don't have time.
Just nod your head yes if you're amenable.
I just want to make one comment. We were the ones that suggested permits in the committee, because we had heard and we had seen other groups come in that didn't do-
All right, thank you. I think that's a yes.
So you're amenable to that. Why don't we bring this back?
I think that's a good idea. We have consensus. Thank you. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to comment on anything not on the agenda? Seeing none, we will adjourn until open session at 7:00.